Pleasure to be with you guys in person this evening. I am going to move efficiently through my presentation. But of course, if there are questions, please let me know and there'll be questions at the end. Today, we're talking about the property cyber and pollution insurance renewal that does run from July 1st to July 1st every year. I want to point out that that is separate from our liability package renewal that we do that runs from January 1st to January 1st. So there is a six-month separation between those two big packages of insurance. So I am asking for seeking council approval in the amount of $944,498.3 today. That is a significant increase from last year, nearly 24%. It's 23.8% increase from last year. The year before that, it was a nearly 35% increase. So I am going to go through some slides talking about why we're seeing that and what's outside of our control and what's within our control and what we're doing to keep that number as low as possible. Because I do recognize it is a higher number than we've seen previously. So there are two parts to why the increase has been dramatic the last couple of years. One part of that is, as you would suspect, we're seeing the cost of damages and property losses going up. So in recent years, due to severe weather events like hurricanes, flooding, earthquake wildfires that have become more prevalent and more costly, that is really driving the cost of insurance. And some of these first kind of blips in the screen that you see that are very, very high, the insurance industry was a little slow to catch up, thinking that those might be outliers. They're now understanding that this is a new war. And so accordingly, the prices of premiums are going up for their customers. A second piece to this is the actual value of what the property that we're insuring continues to go up. So for the city of Renton, we have currently, our real property is valued at $380 million, $758,568. So a large number to us or to me, that feels quite large and each year that goes up. So typically, we see 2% to 4% of a trend factor increase year over year, just a flat increase that they apply across the board. This year, it follows along, that trend factor falls along with the CPI, the Consumer Price Index for inflation. So what you're seeing here is a larger increase there this year of 7%. So that's one piece of this second factor of the values increasing. The next part of that cost increasing, values increasing part is that we insure for replacement value, as we should. So if we have a building that unfortunately, you know, something drastic happens and the building is gone, we insure for the replacement of that building. So not what we, what it cost when we built it in 1980, but rather what it costs to build it today. And as we're seeing all costs increase, we're seeing an even more dramatic increase in the construction costs, averaging 17% in the last year, which includes the labor, materials, equipment, all of it going up. So that's the second piece of why we're seeing these costs really, really going up. A factor of both losses going, the cost of losses dramatically increasing, as well as the values itself increasing. So those are things that are out of our control. You're probably asking what is within our control? And there are a couple of things, and we're doing what we can. So it's important to know that we use a broker for our insurance purchases called Alliant. We've been with them since we became fully self-insured outside of the risk pool. And we go out to bid on every single one of our insurance policies every single year. Previously, in a soft market, we would see some two-year contracts that we could lock in the price for two years. That no longer is common, but we go out for all of our layers to as many companies as we can to secure the best rates. An additional thing that we are doing is we are pooling our resources. So our $380 million of property seems like a lot, as we mentioned. However, big insurers are really looking for billions of dollars. So what we do is through the APIM program, Alliant Property Insurance Program, with a couple of local entities, including Kent, Marysville, Kitsap County, we're pooling some of our values that we can get, we can be more attractive to some of the larger carriers, including voids of London, who is insuring us this year on our policy. So those are two things that we're doing that are impacting and helping with our premium costs. A question that you might have is what about our deductible? We raise our deductible, our deductible is considerably low, it's $50,000. Can we raise that in order to secure better premiums? And the answer to that is unfortunately, no. It doesn't function the same way our liability programs do. Rather, that deductible is a function of how many losses we have suffered that go into our insurance layers. And we haven't had any. So that is why in the last five years plus, but they're really looking, the algorithm that the underwriters look at is really that five-year period mainly. So that's why we enjoy the low deductible, but it doesn't affect our premium. Our premiums are really based on the potential for loss and the value that we're insuring. So with that, I am again asking for seeking, oh, summary page right before I go into that. One more factor, these are aspects that we've already touched on, except I do want to point out the fifth line, which is the cyber line. You'll notice that our cyber premium has more than tripled. And that is a function of the industry itself for cyber, also really suffering a lot of losses. And the insurers are charging more premiums across the board, for some people, five times and more. For us though, we also had our insurer pay out for us. So it's really a function of the two things for our cyber insurance policy. And we are seeing that three-time increase for that premium. I will state that we did receive declarations to insure us from other carriers. So we did go out to many insurance companies for cyber. And this was good coverage for the cost that you're seeing up on the screen, the $96,000. So in summary, I am seeking council approval in the amount of $944,498.3 for our insurance premiums for property cyber inclusion.
Questions?
Councilmember Howard.
I say no to the 3 cents. As a finance chair.
I didn't know how specific I should be. I figured I should put the whole number in there.
Do you have a question? Just the 3 cents?
No, that's just my 3 cents.
That's just your 3 cents. Fair. I walked into that one. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It is concerning that this is increasing the way it is, but saving on insurance is a risk that I don't think we should be taking. My question is for tax future, future, future years. We cannot predict it going to be more earthquakes or it's going to be more hurricanes. So you say that they took time to catch up. You foresee that in the next two, three, four years, do you see this increase?
It's a very good question, a great question. And what the hope is that we're going to see this trend level off. The insurance world is cyclical, so you do see ups and downs of premiums as they go from a soft market, where really, you know, those that are insured, insureds are, have some of the bargaining power and they're kind of fighting for a business, to these hard markets like we're seeing now. And it is cyclical, we've been to a similar place before. But what it is, it does look like this might be more of a permanent, a permanent status. Hopefully, it'll level off in the next two years is what my hope would be.
Yeah, this might be a silly question, just because I'm new and I'm just curious. When we're talking about a broker, I'm assuming it's somebody who goes out and like helps us find the best, best deal. Is that the best, most cost-effective way to look for insurance? Or is that something that we should actually do in-house, not save that extra money? How much does that broker factor into the total cost? It might not even be significant, but I thought I'd ask.
It is a really good question and brokers are very much worth the investment. We do pay a broker fee. Last year, it was about $50,000. And they, they save us, I have to get an estimate to you about what they might save us. But I imagine, you know, it would be double if we tried to go out to bid. We don't have the bargaining power that they do. We don't have the ability to pool resources with, with other entities around us. So I think it would, it would not be, I would be very confident to say it would not be a cost-saving measure. In fact, I would add, we probably need a full-time person to hire to do just that, that work of going out and bidding that these packages that myself and others put together just to go to the broker are incredibly time-consuming and probably would, you know, and then they of course have full-time, a staff of full-time people that go out and have these relationships. So that's a good question though.
No, I virtually appreciate that insight. Thank you so much.
So I know you're asking, asking, but is, given that you just everything, is there, is there any other option? I mean, it's kind of a...
I think that, you know, our option would be to forego insurance on our property. And it would not be a recommendation that I could make. It wouldn't be, but you're right. I mean, it is like, what are the options here, right? And that's really why I spent time on that slide about what's within our control and what's not, so that we could really understand, are we doing everything that we're doing to keep these costs down? Because they, they have really, really gone up. I mean, it is concerning, really is. But we're doing the right thing by insuring our property.
We are.
I didn't doubt it formally.
Again, this might just be a...
So I hate to verbalize things like this, but if we were to have another either cyber or some kind of a catastrophic event, like when we've lost our network, what happens to our insurability?
We saw the, some of the outcomes this year trying to get cyber insurance. We had, our current carrier gave us a line of coverage that they offered to us. That's the three and a half times premium increase that you saw. Other carriers declined to insure us.
For cyber or into?
Just for cyber. Just for cyber. We did put in one more application that we're waiting to hear back on with a company called Brazilians. We were insured through Beasley. They're both excellent carriers. So if there would be a follow-up to that, we're not expecting a better rate back if they are willing to insure us. So if, if that's the case though, we are able to secure a better rate with equal coverage, then it would be reaching back out and it would be a lesser amount.
But you only have four days.
Correct. It's always the tightest timeline that you could possibly imagine. It's, it's a challenge.
And this might be another silly informational question because I'm new. You want to make us seem more attractive to larger carriers. Could you just explain very briefly why we, why is that more, are they usually the better to lower cost?
I think sometimes, yes, yes. And when you package it up in a big deal, you know, a big package, it's just more attractive rather than them taking on, you know, half a million, half a million, half a million, half a million, you just give them 2 billion. It's just, they have one underwriter that writes the whole, well, probably separate still, but it becomes just more attractive, easier to maintain for them and cost-effective for them.
Kind of like the benefit of like bundling to save, right?
Bundling to save.
That makes sense.
So I guess like that.
That could have been a short presentation.
Okay, well, thank you. Oh. Yeah, I have a question. More than anything, a comment. Yeah, I remember in 2019, we were trying to save money and we were towing with this 550 cost. And if we would not purchase that one in 2020, we would have been in real trouble. So saving here by not purchasing insurance is not, I don't think is a not joke, so to speak. But I do believe that we need to figure out, you know, how we're going to keep paying for this amount of insurance because it is from a point of view, it keeps something trust and credit. Thank you.
I have one last question for us, and that was not to go overboard on the cyber policy, but did any of the measures we took following the attack that we experienced, that just goes back to, okay, you're insurable? Or did any of that count towards, oh, the risk is less because of these things that you've done?
I thought the same thing. It seems that the most insurable entities would be ones that have tightened up all of their security. The underwriters are not there yet. I think they will be. But the packages that we put together for cyber were incredible. They told that story. We added a narrative about all, line by line, all of the 40-plus things that we have done to, to make us a good risk to take on. And so, you know, we're, hopefully, you know, hopefully we'll get there. I think that that's spot on, what you just said. I think we are a better risk now.
So with those kind of things, I think part of the problem is that it's the human aspect, right? So we put all the measures where it's possible, but they're also factoring that there was somebody in the city that had made that mistake. So is there a culture of things that aren't trained well and are making mistakes of that? The other thing I want to point out about cyber insurance too is that the relationship with the insurer and their ability to connect us with the attorneys and guide us through that hole, but you can speak more than I can, was worth its weight of pickle. Probably worth half the price of not being, of their experience with it. I can't imagine if we were insured, we'd still be trying to figure it out. It was a big hole there too.
The support was incredible through our insurer. Well, I unfortunately had to call you up and bug you a couple of times pretty late at night. And I appreciate that. Everybody's worked to get through that.
I have a committee report here, which I will sign unless there's an objection to approve, to authorize the 940. Except I'm going to make an amendment here for the 3 cents maybe, I don't know. To get Councilmember Howard, just kidding. All right, I'll go ahead and sign that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
On to the senior activity center.
Thank you. Council President Kirven, all council members. Kelly Beamer, the Parks and Recreation Administrator. So we're coming back to, we came forward on June 6th at Committee of the Whole to ask for approval to move forward with the process of renaming the senior center and that we would come back to council for our policy that, with the name for council approval as well. But after meeting with the family, brief discussion with the mayor as well and staff, the family would like it to be called the Don Person Activity Center. We had some conversation around taking out senior, but it will still be a senior center through our age-friendly initiative. All the things that we've been trying to do to activate more seniors, this is, we felt would be a little more encouraging. A lot of people don't know that it's 50 and older. I know all of us aren't there yet, but when you get there, that's, it'll be available. So they felt pretty strongly about that. Staff was very supportive of that as well. So we'd like to seek council's approval for that. And we'll also be, we have an internal operational meeting this week. And so we'll be sending out a save the date very shortly. Making sure that council obviously approves it first, but so council be aware of when we...
Thank you, Kelly. I am assuming that we are providing properly for unveiling to make sure that they will be able to be here.
Absolutely.
They will come in and have this about the renaming it not senior. I think they really do, they really, that a lot of people that we are in our 50s, early 50s, barrier 50s. And senior is like... See, I didn't think anybody was there. So yeah, sometimes like when you hear senior, it's like, no, people that are 70 or older will, will, you said. And I know it has been a discussion in the past with the senior advisory board, right? Because, because of their beliefs of what the senior should be. So I very much like that. I really like that. So looking forward to see which place that will be.
So our age-friendly initiative and all that stuff is based on programming that title, correct?
It's, yes, but you can look at titling as part of a promotion of what's in the facility. So again, back to the taking out the senior, we tend to, I mean, there's a lot of young seniors as the, you know, all of us start retiring and whatnot, they're still very young compared to a lot of the people that we have in our programs. And so wanting to encourage through the age-friendly initiative is activating more of the seniors in our area. So with true activate, with programming like pickleball and, you know, putting in the exercise equipment out on the back portion or the bocce ball court was, things like that. So, so it's kind of, it's a promotion of that and we can play off of that as we start working through the extra programming. So I guess what I'm asking you is, has there been any identified risks with removing the senior, where it's senior? Not that I'm aware of. We also talked with the senior advisory committee as well. So I mean, as far as like, we're worried that seniors aren't going to go there type of...
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I understand there's a population that lives there and that's probably not going to change no matter what you call it. But I'm just wondering if it would be in any way a turnoff to people or in any way discouraging.
Just, yeah, with, our department has been working on prior to this renaming process, we have been working on promoting it more as an activity center than a senior, I mean, just senior center. It is still going to remain a senior center. But again, when I sent the email out, you know, there's a lot of staff that didn't even know the age was 50. So back to the point of, you know, is it 70 years and older and, you know, doing those types of activities? Where again, through the age-friendly initiative, that was one of the things that we did identify is people 50 years and older, besides doing things with their family and, you know, maybe hiking and biking, those kind of things, don't really have a lot of socialization in other programs that they know they can go to. So that's part of our promotion and using communications and everything else to, to increase the population there.
Sure. Just in my experience, at the beginning, yes, like around, I can say 2018, some of the seniors and the advisory board were concerned about, you know, bringing this new concept of, of, of W, older adults, older adults, I don't know if I would call it. People that are not senior grad, who are 50. But when this planation, it took a while for the staff to explain then that, that to get more grants and to activate the new, it's the right money in the near future, we are going to be all, the majority of the population is going to be older than 50. So we have to serve them as well and we can get more money, grants. And I think that was part of the labor, right? That finally they stop fighting it because yes, they did fight it a little bit. They were concerned that this is our senior, like who's going to invade our space. That was the people. And I was through these conversations and, and I think that now they, they come understand it better with the issue. That this stuff has been...
And that's, and exactly that. Again, I can't stress enough, it will still remain a senior center. But as we start bringing in, you know, baby boomers and the next generations that come down the line, a lot of the seniors there, we were bringing in like kids from the RCC to do a crossover-type program for younger activity with some of the younger seniors. And they really enjoyed that. It just brought a lot more variety to the, to the center and a lot more options for seniors that might not be going there to do some of the current programs and then join it because they, we've got new ones there.
If there's no more questions, I do have a committee report to sign to approve this and officially rename it the Don Person Activity Center, which I think is a lovely name and I'm excited to sign this into existence, hopefully pass this into existence later tonight. So and then we'll look forward to the ribbon cutting, unveiling, the ceremony.
The unveiling, yes.
Unveiling, there we go. Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our last item on the agenda tonight is the 2023-2024 biennial budget update.
My name is Kristen Tregelz. I'm the fiscal services director. Today, Carrie and I will be providing an update on the 2023-2024 biennial budget, including where we're at in the process and what work has been completed so far to guide and inform. So this is a high-level timeline of the budget process remaining this calendar year. The city prepares its budget on a biennial calendar year, two years at a time. And we're currently working to prepare the 2023 and 2024 budget. Washington State has specific laws that outline the timing of budget development. Such this timeline, this development, those required deadlines. You can see that we're currently conducting budget advisory committee workshops. This takes place three consecutive weeks in June. There's a public hearing to solicit input from the community on our budget. The mayor will deliver the budget message and the preliminary budget will be presented to council on October 3rd at the Committee of the Whole. Department presentations are planned for Committee of the Whole October 10, 17, and 24. These presentations will explain what department budgets hope to accomplish. And it will identify any budget changes and give council the opportunity to ask questions and suggestions on budget. Public hearing number two will be held at the regular council meeting on October 17. And this will include information identification of different businesses, those budget as required by us. The final public hearing will be held on October 20. Regular council meeting followed by adoption of the final budget at the beginning of November to align with our RSW repair. Finance has updated its 2023-2024 department budget within our accounting system for all existing programs. This is what we refer to as our baseline budget for departments. And it includes preliminary salary and benefit projections. It includes our replacement reserve requirements and a copy of all line item budgets from the 2021-2022 budget. Through the month of June, city staff are updating these baseline budgets with specific guiding principles in mind. Any one-time revenue or reserves should not be used to fund the ongoing program expenditures. Staff should be comparing spend from prior year to determine if it is still relevant and needed in future years. If there is a budget need, staff should consider reallocating budget from other accounts to help offset some of the costs. Any new investments should consider the cost of ongoing operating and maintenance costs, as well as the cost of replacements. And finally, any new program request that will increase the baseline budget should align with the city's business plan, vision, mission, and goals. As part of the budget development process, the city conducts different public engagement opportunities to solicit feedback and inform the community on how the city plans... on how the city plans to spend taxpayer dollars. One of these ways is through the three public hearings that are planned for this evening and in October. In addition, the mayor invites members of the community to form a budget advisory committee, which we refer to as the V A C. The city has held a budget advisory committee for over ten years as a way to get input from the community on budget decisions before the budget was formed. Due to the pandemic and the need to decrease spending, we did not conduct V A C workshops for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget. However, we have resumed this public engagement effort for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. The V A C is made up of seventeen individuals ranging from residents to business owners. Their goal is to advise city staff on what is important to them as a resident or a member of the business community. They are to inform city staff on whether we met the mark on current programs. They will help identify if there are some programs that they would like to see more of. And they'll also identify if there are any existing programs that have, that may have served the benefit in the past, but no longer have the same impact. The participation of the V A C members in this portion of our budget process ensures continued transparency, which is fundamental to our accountability to our community. An open and transparent budget process fosters trust in our community. And it makes certain that people's views and interests are respected and that taxpayer money is well spent. To begin these V A C workshop discussions, we first conducted a survey amongst the V A C members to identify their top priorities in the city. Based on this feedback, we planned three workshops to further explore their priorities and identify areas that the city could improve upon and potentially expand, enhance or create new programs to meet the demand. At the conclusion of the workshops, finance will work with the V A C members to formulate a recommendation to the mayor on proposed budget needs. Based on the initial survey that we conducted, the top five priorities identified by the V A C in order of importance are public safety, business development, personal, city programs and downtown revitalization. During our workshops, we will be further exploring the common themes around these priorities in order to formulate a recommendation.
So, um, as in most years, there's always factors we need to consider when we're preparing the budget. And, um, this year is not like any others. We have, um, some changes in tax structure that we've talked about in the past. And so last fall, we limited some code changes to our B and O tax where we increased that maximum tax cap that any one business would pay in a given year. And, uh, we're also have, um, second and final reading tonight to change our B and O tax rates. And so, um, if that's passed this evening, we're anticipating an extra three point three between those two changes for B and O taxes for the upcoming year. We also have inflation at historic highs right now. The C P I, um, as of the end of May is eight point three. We just heard from Kelsey on our insurance, you know, the twenty-three percent just insurance alone. And so, um, not, I mean, we're really battling the inflation that we're seeing right now. Along with inflation comes increased personnel costs. Typically, when we're preparing the budget, we expect a two to three percent increase between wages and benefits. And so the next couple of years, we're going to be looking more at the five to six percent. So, um, any offset that we were hoping to kind of soften a little bit with some of these, you know, tax, um, changes. We do have the inflation that's really impacting that quite a bit. Okay. So our long range plan, just to remind people, um, about this picture, the green line is our reserves or our fund balance. And so, um, going forward, even though we did mix and changes to our B and O tax, we still are anticipating that our revenues are going to be lower than future years. A lot of that is because of inflation. And so we are going to still need to use some of our fund balance to, to balance out future years. Now, if we wouldn't have made some of these B and O tax changes, the ones that we made last fall and, and the ones that we're hoping to pass this evening, this line would be even worse and below the, the zero mark. So as you probably remember in the past, I've shown where the green line goes below zero. And so, um, really, um, it's really important to kind of keep that in mind. The prior two years, we have done better than we projected where revenues did come in higher than expenditures. Twenty and twenty-one mainly were because we had so many open positions. So as everybody remembers, we froze a lot of positions in twenty twenty going into the pandemic. And then just having a really large, strong labor market right now, it's been hard to fill those. And we're seeing that again this year, a lot of savings in personnel. So for our revenues for next year, um, just a reminder, about seventy-five percent of our revenues come from taxes. So the, the large four, the B and O taxes, the sales tax, the property tax and utility tax. So our sales tax, if we're looking at where we're at this year for budget, um, we're expecting about a two percent increase in sales tax. Our sales tax is doing really well right now and, um, hoping to continue to see that go up. As more businesses come and decide to open their doors here, that also helps with that figure. You know, our sales tax makes up about thirty percent of our total revenues. Now, this also is the most volatile during recessionary periods. And so knowing that we have economists talking quite a bit about, um, possible recession in the future, we want to be very thoughtful as we're, um, budgeting for this number and, um, figuring out what makes sense because we don't want to over commit, um, with resources that we don't have. For property taxes, that makes up about twenty percent. We are limited on how much we can increase that. As we talked about at the council retreat, we are in a unique situation where we do have big capacity for property tax. So we can increase that more than one percent. And we discussed, you know, thinking about that for, for the next couple of years, doing so just to kind of help offset some of these ongoing costs that we have. Utility tax about fourteen percent, that's very stable. The only, um, thing that we are seeing, it, we're only estimating it to increase about one point five to two percent, mainly because people are starting to make decisions on how they're consuming their utilities, you know, are they going to cut the cord, so to speak, and, and not have cable or are they going to make changes with their landline or cell phones? So, um, just a little bit more thoughtful on how to estimate those going forward. And then the B and O tax, we're expecting, um, to be about three point five percent or three point five million more next year because of these code changes we're making as well as about two percent increase there. And then the last line, other taxes, the big change there where we're seeing a decrease of seventeen million, that's largely from the federal grant on the ARPA grant that we have. And so, um, that's one-time money that we won't have ongoing. And then the general fund expenditures, so, um, these are largely, you know, made up of personnel, about sixty-one percent. We have a very small amount that's discretionary. And as Kristen mentioned, we really, we've started with the baseline budget and staff is really, um, developing that right now. As we consider additional spending, we're really looking at where can we save, where if we had some underspent areas where we can shift some costs around instead of adding. Right now, we don't have a report out for where we're at with the expenditures for the next budget. We just have been focusing on revenues right now because departments are working on developing those budgets right now. Along with the general fund budget, we're also preparing, um, at updating our capital plan. We talked quite a bit about our capital needs within the city with transportation and our buildings and our parks. And we're going to be, um, working on doing a priority of those capital items that we need to be, um, improving in the next several years as well. So that will be coming forward. Then how are we doing, going backwards again, how are we doing thus far this year? So through quarter one. So the first column is our annual budget and then the second column is where we are, where we are at through the end of March. And so as I mentioned, our sales tax is doing great. We are on pace, if we continue with the same pace, to be, um, ahead of budget at several million dollars, which is wonderful to see. Um, again, we're being thoughtful about that and being careful about watching that as we go through the rest of the year. Uh, our property tax and B and O tax is showing below budget, but that's just because they're more cyclical when they're due. So no concerns, um, there and utility taxes are right on mark. And then the other revenues, like I mentioned, that's a large amount of that is that federal grant. We recognize that when costs are spent, then we recognize offsetting revenue to match the revenue expenditures at the same time. On the personnel or on the expenditure side, we are doing great with budget. We're under budget. Um, and so personnel is the main driver of that. We, um, for just the first quarter, Ellen mentions it, I'm probably going to get the number wrong, but she says it's about fifty open positions that they're just recruiting for right now, not even how many open positions we have. Um, so just in the first quarter, we saved about three million dollars that, um, just for personnel costs alone. So I'm hoping to get those positions filled because it's not always a good thing to have. So that is part of the savings that we're seeing as well as the contracted services is the offsetting expenditure of the, um, ARPA funds we allocated. So, um, you know, through the, in the first quarter, we're looking great. The annual budget, we were expecting to have to use, um, reserves of about five point two million. And so far this year, we're ahead about one point two. So we'll continue to see, oh, it's always hard to look at numbers the first quarter because it's just a short period of time that continue to look at that. So, um, as Kristen mentioned, we're just at the beginning stages of developing this budget, gathering input and guidance from our community members and the budget advisory committee. It's been great having wonderful discussions with them and they have a lot of great ideas and a lot of great questions. Um, and after that, we'll take the next several months to get all that compiled, get the departments to finish off their budgets and then take a step back and make sure we're balanced and that we're not over committing ourselves and make sure that we have enough resources to be able to continue on with some of the needs that we have with the city. So once we have that pulled together, the mayor will present that to you this fall and we'll go through questions that you have as well.
Carrie, would you mind going back to the projected?
Yes.
So one thing I just wanted to mention that we, we don't really talk about, it's important for me to remember is, you know, why do we not want to use those reserves? Well, why is it important not to go there? And one of the reasons that it's super important not to go there is because those reserves help us qualify for our borrowing and credit rating. And we're allowed, because of those reserves, we can borrow at the most inexpensive interest rates from municipal municipalities. And so if we were to start dipping into that, it's not just a cash thing. It's that all of those capital plans, buildings, parks, water, streets, transportation, all those things become a risk because we wouldn't be able to borrow the due debt. Or it would cost a lot more to borrow to go do this. And that, that's just something that I want to have out there every time we look at this. I'm glad to see it move from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six, but, um, I mean, it is, it's a larger risk than just a cash position.
So looking out, uh, direction that, and that's what I think. For the, I can't help but think, okay, well, we're just faced with making some unpopular decisions in a few years. Specifically property taxes and, uh, B and O taxes. Lowering the threshold and that sort of thing. I guess on the flip side, eh? Or instead of getting more businesses in, you know, and that sort of thing, uh, to generate thoughts that way. But I guess as you look at it, uh, you know, where is? Tell me I'm wrong. It's what I'm saying. Where, where maybe is there, uh, some, the potential relief or some kind of stabilizing factor or action? If, if there isn't, I mean, just kind of.
Well, one of the, if we could find, you know, the silver lining in this, we have done better than what we've budgeted in the past. And so, um, like I said, we want to be thoughtful about our revenues and make sure that we're not over committing ourselves. Um, and so know that we've, we've made good decisions. We have good people here making good decisions about trying to find good insurance rates and the things that we're trying to do here. So, um, these are projections, um, and it's, if I had a crystal ball, I wish I, I could, um, you know, see the future. But this is just where we think we're going to go. I think the other thing is, is making this decision we did last fall with increasing those, you know, the, you know, tax maximum amount was a huge, um, huge impact to this. It, um, significantly helped this outlook. And I know that's not popular to do and it was hard and there was a lot of hard discussions. But I think overall, you know, we, we joke, well, we don't joke, we talk about it. I mean, it costs a lot to rent a city and there's, um, a lot to it. And so, um, if we had to save money, you know, we'd have to kind of look at staffing levels, where are we at? Does it make sense? And that's some of those questions we have with the V A C, you know, the budget advisory committee, how are you feeling about things? You know, we even kind of looked at our staffing levels compared to our growth in our, um, in our city. We're continuing to grow, it needs more resources. And so that's a slippery slope if we start to look at staffing too, because there's an expected level of service that residents have and we need to be careful about. So that was a, a long answer to.
Well, I know, I'm looking at the objection and this is a long shot, twenty twenty-six, what's happened in twenty twenty-six, World Cup. And that's what, and I'm, I'm curious if the conversation's even started to, to look to see what kind of shot in the arm that gives to one of wise.
And I have not began to look at it yet. These are just strictly the, the increases that we're projecting, the two percent and then taking into account the changes in the B and O tax structure.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And, uh, and make you feel any better since the last day years that I have been here, I haven't seen these numbers and they have done marvelous things. Uh, until we go to the point that we have to make the hard. These are decisions, we have been talking about them for the last, at least for the last eight years, but we have, it's time to make payment. We will have to because this is not a healthy financial bridge. We cannot be spending more money than we are receiving. I always have said it, said it again. Your revenues have to be higher than your expenditures, not we are putting ourselves in a hole and that's not, uh, healthy financial budget. So what I'm expecting is that this budget will reflect in that basically that we will not be spending more than what we have because that's the beginning of being to the resource and we don't want to go to the service. Say that, I, there, there's a statement that you made that, that is very good, which is the new investment should be considered on the operations and the cost. Because definitely, we need to make sure that when people throw the water, they can take a shower. I mean, that, those are levels that we cannot never count. But while I felt that we were going to have a better breathing room because of the B and O tax, I, 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 I'm a little bit shocked, but I understand why. It's not as, as we're going to have to take harder decisions, uh, in the next person, next years because, you know, it gives us much room as a planet just because of the financial situation of the country. But it's still concerning, very concerning. And I know that you guys are going to have a hard time with this budget because every department is going to have their own priorities. And, and then the, the public has their own priorities.
I had the benefit of starting here in the depths of the recession. So I remember when that number, that, that fund, that, I mean, fund balance was really, really bad. And I have to say to our finance team, you guys have done an impeccable job of making sure we never made it to that endpoint. Um, and the mayor will remember when we were faced with, we do R F A, can we do a B and O tax? There's just sort of, I can't remember. Bond, yes, bond. And so, like, it's the three, thank you, thank you. But I, while that looks disconcerting, I have all the faith in the world that we're going to not reach that because we will tighten our belts, uh, we will make hard decisions, make hard choices. Uh, and the one thing that we won't do with those hard choices is that we're not going to sacrifice. is that we're not going to sacrifice services that we give to our residents. They make sure that they still receive services that they need to receive. And, you know, we're going to have to tighten in that area. During the Great Recession, we had departments, community services. So a big brunt of what was happening because we have to take care of what's safety. We have to make sure that water, we have to, all those things. So while that's disconcerting, I have all the faith in the world that we won't get there in 2026, even if we do that.
I mean, only if you want to. No, maybe for the presentation. I have, it's very concerning, I think, with what actually, I wasn't going to say, I mean, what was Councilmember Prinsdorf said? I think, you know, we need to be careful with where we tie our belts. I think that when error was that hit on human services and that's why we were seeing some of the things we've seen and written in the last two years. And to remember that things like human services and public safety overlap a lot. A lot. And that's the human services have a long-term impact. And then investing in human services and public safety, but since development, then it also in turn affects city cleanliness. So a lot of these things, I think, I hope we will be okay. I said, we'll be able to make those hard decisions. And I do really appreciate all the information because it is jarring to say the least. But as someone who has looked heavily at budgets the last year, I think we'll, I hope we'll be okay.
And so I just want to follow up. When I said community services, it wasn't just human services. There were things with parks and building to have in our parks. I mean, human services is part of it, obviously. But we had some things with parks where we had really tough decisions. And we're now at the point where the bill is due on some of those decisions. And we're having to take care of that with some of the parks and the things that we had. And so again, I have faith that we'll get there. Obviously, we shouldn't be sacrificing the services. To sacrifice public safety. I get, I have faith in you all and our departments that will figure it out.
So just going through the vouchers this last time for the finance committee, we have our debt payment to the US Bank. And $678,000 on debt payment, whether it's principles of interest and parks, there's surface water, there's wastewater, there's income. I mean, there's water that comes into your building or your school, your kid's school or your home or your business. Then there's wastewater of getting that water out of your kids' school or home or your business. There's parks, there's, I mean, these are the things that we, I mean, it's not just, we have to be able to make these payments as well. You know, just because you take out a bond, you know, that's the end of the day, you got to make a payment. And you know, that's, that's a, that's a pretty big ticket. But if you put it in terms of like your kid's school, you know, keeps the surface water from going into the school. I think people get sympathetic, but, you know, they understand that that's, that's a whole separate thing. It's, it's, you know, parks are nice, but what we're talking about is really when you flush the toilet, that's the water in the right direction.
Which I was just going to mention that, I mean, yeah. I have a belief that located for public works because, yeah, it's not popular, you know? It's not popular, but it's something that people that we have grown in countries where we don't have water every day. I mean, you understand the value of, of, I mean, departments like public works, very well. For me, what I'm expecting is a balance. Not that we, there is one department that did once on another that we're going to reduce is for, this is like, not everybody is going to get what they want. But we have to make sure that we can pay what we, what, what we, we have borrowed and also to provide the services that we need to provide at a certain level. I know that we're not going to be able to be here to be able to provide everything and to be able, we're going to need more because we never obviously need more. But this is a, I consider this a very important project for this year because it's a project that is going to keep us balanced. It's not going to produce a hole, but we're going to provide services to the level that we have been providing. So I'm very grateful for this one, thank you.
Now, I agree with you. If someone spends a picture of their falls at the parks around them, so we have to maintain those two. And so that's why I say it's got, it's got to be holistic. Everything, you know, surface water, wastewater, all that's important. But one of the things that makes us a world-class city is that we have perks that people want to recreate. And we can't those either. And that's when I said bills can be due, you know, we've got some parks that we're working on this year that we're, you know, upgrading that we weren't able to get to because of the Great Recession. And so we just, we're going to have hard choices to make. Glad that we have you guys. I don't know who's on the VAC, but I'm glad you're looking at this before we are.
It is lipstick and I would say, and I'll say again, parks need service, but also it affects public safety. It packs attraction to the city and it packs all of that. But what you hit on that made me think about our tour that Councilmember Albert sent me, I took to the water area. We actually saved a lot of money because we have it on awful floor. We're on a few cities in King County that has its own water that we have. That's liquid gold. And I said, we missed out a couple of years ago on our tour, we learned, we missed out a couple of years ago in not selling it at cost. This is Seattle. You would have had a more revenue if we had sold that at cost. So I'm wondering, can we get creative if things, you know, go sideways? Is that a revenue source for us? And that might be a stupid question, but I'm going to ask it.
Yeah, and the water is, this is all general funds. So this is outside, so water and surface water, wastewater has their own component and funded by people that are using their resources. And so yes, we can sell our water. I know that there's other cities that do that. If that's something that we choose to do, we can look at it. But we also want to make sure that we have enough for the residents we have, you know?
Absolutely.
I'll chime in on this slide that we've been staring at because I, as I, my first reaction I saw was actually better, when, and maybe that's just because I've seen the, the previous iterations. It's like, oh, things are looking up. It is my optimism's nature because we, because I know we do such a good job of budgeting fairly conservatively, I think, and knowing like, you know, this is very much our possible future that we're ending to borrow and some changes and then certainly we could commit better. So I have some reason for optimism. I mean, we'll see obviously how the year closes out, the slide you shared earlier on where we are on expected revenues versus expenditures is promising that will come in. Although if I understand that right, is it still going to come, if we're on track? Is that bar chart still going to look basically like it does with operating revenue?
Yeah, it'll be, revenue will be higher if we continue the way we are and don't fill these positions. Yeah.
So then, I mean, I think I was the one who said, you know, years ago, let's not just kick the can in the road and it's hard decision. I'd probably say the same thing, you know, if we can do things to address this now and that put us in better, you know, so we can reverse that trend, we should be looking at every one of those to do that. Because like, because I do feel like a little bit of deja vu, like we're always back here, we're budget cycle, looking at something very similar to this. Although this one looks, like I said, less bad than the previous versions.
Right, and a lot of that's because of the decisions we made last fall. And also, you know, looking to increase the BNO tax rates this evening, getting that passed. And then possibly looking at using some of that big capacity that's going to help this. And so those tough decisions last fall really have helped, you know, raise that line. And so it's, it's looking better, but, you know, overall because of inflation, it's still, it's still looking the way it is, you know?
Well, we were talking about parks. Yeah, I was not here during the recession, you were here during the recession. But I was here with, with, we took a consumer money goal, goal to get to get the money needed to replace all the treatments. The parks are now looking beautiful because of that. Now, those have been the hardest issues, you know? Every single time we have to make a consumer money goal to add more taxes to whatever. But as Ryan said, I mean, we cannot keep kicking that can to the, because we are there right now. And yes, there are going to be popular decisions, but we cannot wait to another recession.
I'd be curious if we did take a look at that baked property tax opportunity. What kind of contributions are going to make? I mean, obviously, it's the degree to which we is, but are we, are we, can you provide us at some point, doesn't have to be immediately, with some ideas of what that might look like so that we can start, you know, chewing on those?
And we talked about at the council retreat, raising it 10 cents. It would bring in another $2 million. And so right now, I think we are at a dollar, say a dollar 10, but maybe it's a dollar one. And so for every, for every $1,000 of assessed value, raising it an extra 10 cents more than what we're allowed to could bring in another $2 million. So there is definite capacity there that could be a soft, you know, not, not too big of a thing. And as you remember that dollar that I showed you, you know, a lot of that property tax, only 9.4 cents of the property tax goes to the city of Brenton. So as other agencies are raising their taxes, we've been consistent at ours over the last several years, just keeping it that minimum 1%. And so, you know, very little of the overall property tax that comes, that each resident pays comes to the same.
I, I forgot to mention that you mentioned a couple of times about the transparency of the project process. I highly appreciate that. I appreciate that we very early on, we're putting all these documents out there so that all the knows where we are. And I mean, you're, thank you so much for being very cool speaking to me, I don't know who is the people, but at least I will see two texts from the Spanish-speaking population, the Latinos taking me saying, and I say, no, it was not me, it was he. They, that they were included invited, so thank you.
Since you brought it up, just as a point of information to me, how is the VAC, how is that?
I was selected. So we brought in a lot of our week up or down to the group that participated last time. We looked through that list that the number of books that had participated over the years. And then a lot of the contacts, people that have reached out to serve on other boards and committees. An example was Dr. Anna Jones, who was one of the people that last once to miss the equity commission. I reached out to her and asked her to serve on it. The I met this recently, I think, when I went to an event with John Wy. She's very old, expanding, so sure groups that if you guys have people that you'd like to recommend or that have to take a look at me. The thing about this is the group can only be so large for it to be functioning. So serve its purpose.
I still don't very specific out of the qualifications or?
In the past, we're members of the other boards. This, this time, no, the mayor expanded, not the people that are also advisory, the people that are not with me for, not a lot of people.
There are residents that are also in the county world and I understand finance is at a little deeper level than some people that are active in the community, so.
For, for transparency purposes, the one online is not up to date. The one online is showing Mike Hoffren and other people from other committees. So if you want to be transparent, I don't know now who's on the budget advisory committee. And what I also would like to know is like, what is the like neighborhood diversity? Like what parts of Brenton are they coming from? I don't, we can't really add us to the regular, like, are we getting people from around? Like this is not for this, obviously, and I know we're running under time. But I think it's totally fine to be curious, make sure that list is up to date for the public.
Sure, absolutely.
And maybe also understanding like a little transparency of what they bring to the table. Like if they have like that accounting services and like the deep impact of the legitimate or whatever.
We're not going to do that to, to the people that are going to be in time like that and subject them to some side of the question. That would make sense.
We are going to update the list online.
Yeah, putting the names on the list makes sense.
So the names are all listening to people in the, in the watch.
The meeting was that they have their public meetings too, right? Or, that's a, could a member of the public attend, I guess would be a good question.
But actual questions.
Having not done the research on it before, in general, since generally applies in general, sounds like a good one. If it's a person specifically, probably sound people, but it's still establishing the basis.
Which I, I which I agree, I mean, in the past, in the past, I mean, I think my first budget, I was very suspicious about the advisory group. Very hopeful, who is this people and what is their authority and why are they doing there? And have, and then Bill Valero had realized, my God, they're western supporters. They are volunteers, I mean, how I dare, how I dare to go and question them while you are giving your, your time to the city to do this, you know? But I understand, I mean, that was a first customer, but I did have a lot of questions about it. And it's a one-on-one with the mayor and more than anything else that clarified it.
And I will say three nights, I was on the very first one. And we had, I think, from June, end of July. So the fact that you people streamlined and compacted. Because it was, it was heavy lift. It was a heavy lift, donating, I think we're doing seven weeks. Just, yeah. It's a way for residents to have input on a budget that at the end of the day impacts their lives at a greater level.
We have some of our public hearings with it, probably. Almost have a space, obviously, and we may have something.
Many opportunities to participate in the process. Do we have any final questions, comments? We're going to get to talk a lot more about the budget as the year goes on. So this is only the first, there's a good start though, I think. All right, unless there's anything else, we will go into the journey, play the whole, and we'll reconvene at school council at 7:00 PM. Thank you.